Okay, I want to welcome everybody to the December 21st meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And we have our invocations tonight by Captain Mike Bell from Station 19, Shift C. And then our pledge is going to be done by firefighter Kyle Sanders. So with that, those who are willing and able to stand, please do so.
I'd say good evening to those of you who are wanting to participate, if you will, bow your heads. Our holy Father, we want to thank you, God, for this day that you have blessed us with, with health and strength, Lord. God, we pray for these proceedings that are about to take place, that your wisdom and your will be carried out. Thank you for the leadership represented here throughout the whole county and for the blessings you bestowed upon us in this last year. Father, I pray that you'd bless everyone here with the very best and merest of Christmas. God, we wouldn't forget our soldiers that are serving on foreign soil and ask you, Lord, to please protect them and watch over them for those that are in public safety, for those that are working in the hospitals, and all of those that are doing something to help their fellow men. We ask you to bless them. And Father, we pray all these things and ask your will be done, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Jets. Appreciate it. Merry Christmas to both of you. And I'd like to move to add a non-agenda item to tab number four, Item 2, to approve a firefighter's cancer benefit program required by House Bill 146. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Call the question and it passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to tab number one. We have some presentations tonight. We'll start out with Commissioner Weatherford. Do you want to join us? Okay, so I'll go down there and help out Commissioner Weatherford. All right, good evening, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. We've got a couple of presentations tonight and the board's going to be making. The first one, I'd like to ask Hope Warren to come forward with our 4-H and Extension Service. And we have some awards, some very special people. These young ladies just won an award that is pretty prominent. And if you ever watched the TV show Chopped, I think it's something like that, they were trying to do something and not get chopped, was that it? So I'm gonna let Hope explain it to us and then read one of the awards for us.
Okay, I'm Hope Warren. I'm the Director at the Extension Office. And I'm very, very proud of these young ladies here tonight. And I'm also... And I'm also very proud of Brittany Kelly. Brittany Kelly is our 4-H and Youth Leader here in the county. And she works directly, her and her staff work directly with these young people in Cobb County. And these are just four of hundreds. And so she does a great job and I'm very proud. I'm going to ask her to actually talk about the program and introduce the young people and then we'll hand out the certificates.
Thank you, Hope. Again, I'm Brittany Kelly and I'm the 4-H Agent here. And this group of 4-Hers back in October participated in the Georgia 4-H Food Challenge. And so basically what that is, is a competition, like Commissioner Weatherford said, very similar to Chop. So these girls were given a basket of mystery ingredients. They had no idea what was in the basket when they first started. So they were given the basket and they have to create the dish utilizing the mystery ingredients. They have to calculate the cost per serving. They have to create a five-minute presentation on the nutritional value of their dish, plate their dish, clean up, all in 40 minutes. So, yes, so there, yes, that was tough. So they were working under pressure and they competed against several teams from across the state of Georgia. And when we got the scores back, they actually had the highest cooking scores and the highest presentation scores. So we are very proud of these young ladies. And I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and what school they go to as well as what they learned.
Thank you, Ms. Brittany. I'm Rebecca Glover. I'm in the ninth grade. I'm from Holy Innocence Episcopal School. And one thing that I learned from Food Challenge is that practice makes us our best.
Hi, I'm Chantelle Siree. I'm in the ninth grade and I attend Harrison High School. One thing I learned from the 4-H Food Challenge is just how important nutrition is in our daily lives.
Hi, my name is Rishi Chakwezi. I'm in the 10th grade and I attend Pebblebrook High School. One thing that I learned from participating in the 4-H Food Challenge is that teamwork will make the dream work.
Hi, my name is Kayla Fox. I'm a 10th grade 4-Her. I attend Kennesaw Mountain High School. One thing I learned from 4-H Food Challenge is listening to other people's opinions is the key to success.
Brittany's gonna hand out the certificates, but I'm gonna read one. So I'm gonna hold on to this one and read it while you hand them their certificates. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you and the whole Cobb County 4-H Food Challenge Team for winning top honors at the Georgia 4-H Food Challenge Competition. During the competition, students are given a basket of mystery ingredients and they must create a dish, calculate the cost per serving, and write a presentation on the nutritional value of the dishes, all within 40 minutes, just like Brittany said. Your team placed first in the state, earning Master 4-H Status and a trip to the 2018 National 4-H Seafood Cook-Off in New Orleans. We are extremely proud of you and your teammates and wish you the best as you represent Georgia at the national competition.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ladies. That's quite a challenge. Wasn't any snails or anything in it, was it, or anything weird? Good, we're so proud of you. And when is the one in New Orleans? August. Okay, get ready. Bring some stuff to me and I will be glad to do it.
I have one question. When does Rebecca have time to cook without, with her fencing expertise?
She builds fences?
She did a performance at the 4-H Gala at Governor Barnes's Fund and is an excellent fencer.
Oh, my goodness. Quite an accomplished set of young ladies. We're proud of you and thanks for all you do. All right, thank you. Just give one more around, unlock. All right. Why don't we just all of us stay back down here? We've got one more to go tonight. This is a very good one to do at Christmas and I think you're going to be very impressed with this next presentation. This presentation is to lifeguards and Commissioner Cupid's districts and Seven Springs and Water Park. So come on up here. And I would like to have Reese Lawler come forward and Jordan Jackson, if he's with us. And Tasha Smith, if she'd like to come forward, she is the Director there as well. Let me just tell you a little bit about what these two gentlemen did. Cobb County Board of Commissioners honors you for your work as a lifeguard and your quick response to save a young man's life at Seven Spring Water Park. You found a boy in distress and pulled him from the water, immediately assessing his lifeless condition and starting CPR. While you and Jordan Jackson performed CPR, I was reading yours, by the way, the boy was resuscitated and began breathing on his own. After EMS arrived, he was taken to the hospital for two nights and has since made a full recovery. Thank you for your diligence, responsiveness, and professionalism during this crisis. We're proud of your training you received and your exemplary actions. Now, it is a Christmas time. We had asked the young boy to be here tonight, so he's going to have a Christmas that it wouldn't have if it wasn't for these two heroic lifeguards. So is David Lightbody here tonight, by the way? Oh, well, it was a good thought. But I'm sure he will remember you forever because he's here because of you. And we can't thank you enough for what you did and your training and what you've done to save a life in for Cobb County. So congratulations. So let's give these heroes another... That's a great way to start out an evening. Question about it. Okay, it's going to tab two now. We have those wishing to address the board. How many speakers, Ms. Dance?
You have five speakers.
Five speakers, okay.
The first is David Birkenbine.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board, County Manager. My name is David Birkenbine, Medical Burn Ban. To end off the year, I'd like to bring some suggestions up on the Medical Burn Ban to go back to the old form and get rid of the chimneys and all this stuff and get rid of the yard debris quote that they put in there, since yard debris is sticks and twigs and limbs that the fire chiefs said they can burn in these chimneys and these fire pans. And here's the old one that doesn't show bias on the people that have the COPD or breathing problems or whatever medical condition they have that is affected by the smoke. Also, on the Quick Reference Guide, on the one where it says restricted burn areas, I'd like to see if we can call it what it is, a Medical Burn Ban. And by doing so, down in the middle to where it says even though you follow all the rules of burning, and then it explains on the fire will be extinguished for these items, use of property affecting you for your medical condition. And I brought this map here in the summertime. It shows all the counties that are green and they call it a burn ban. They don't call it a burn restriction. They call it a burn ban. In the summertime, if you get caught burning, you're gonna get fined. I believe I'm correct on this. You can't burn in the summertime. Well, on these pits and these chimneys and all this, you can do it year-round. And it has no regulation on them. It doesn't have anything that it's, you know, that's gonna nullify the, or use of them. But when we come to the recreational fires, I mean, just reading it, it seems like it should cover the pans, the fire pits and all this stuff. You gotta burn clean wood. It's gotta be logs, not yard debris coming out of your yard, not wet yard debris, not rotting limbs that's been laying out there for six months. People are not gonna burn the best stuff anyway. Even in the yard waste, it says the, gives you the size and diameter of the stuff that you've cut or brought down from the trees. And it got it, you know, specific there. But yet in the application for the Medical Burn Ban, it says clean wood and you can't use yard debris. But that's what we're burning. We're burning yard debris. I'm gonna cut it short tonight. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Enjoyed you all and I'll be back next year.
The next speaker is Jimmy Richards.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jimmy Richards. I live in the Mars Hill, Acworth-Dewes Road area. And I come up here to speak tonight about my career. I just retired about five months ago, over 44 years, over the road truck driver here, last 30 years here at Yellow Freight, and received a Mile Master Award, 3.2 million consecutive miles without an accident. And after I retired, I hired on as a Cobb County School Bus Driver. And I went through the county's training that they had and they taught this old truck driver how to parallel park a school bus. I couldn't parallel park a tractor trailer, let alone a school bus. But the training that the county gives us, the way they do everything is just great. And I'm now driving a school bus in the North Cobb area, which means a lot to our family being involved in the community. Now that I retired, I have 152 grandchildren that I take care of every day. And that, what I wanted to talk about is this stop-arm camera enforcement contract. I was angry and shocked my first week of school, how many people run my stop sign. And even more frustrated because I couldn't get out and do anything about it. And we're out there taking care of our kids on the bus, getting them loaded safely, getting them unloaded, getting them to school and getting them back home safely. So the county put a stop-arm camera bus on my route. The last 34 school days, I've had 99 cars run my bus stop arm. That's 99 too many. And I would just ask tonight that you help support the contract for the stop-arm cameras and we appreciate, the thousand school bus drivers appreciate your support.
The next speaker is Meredith Banks.
Good evening. I'm also here to support the stop-arm camera contract. I'm a 10-year school bus driver. I also work in the middle of the day between driving my routes. I am a team leader of 45 safety-minded individuals who go to schools and teach schoolchildren how to keep themselves safe around their school bus stops. The elementary schools, we take buses out, put them in the bus port, and the kids come out and go station to station to station, one bus at a time, one class at a time. And we tell them what we need from them as a school bus driver, behavior-wise, inside and outside the bus. I also go to middle schools and I myself do presentations. I have a PowerPoint that's almost an hour long that I show the school kids, older kids, younger kids don't see this, but they see bus crashes. They see actual video of what their behavior could possibly cause if they are constantly distracting the school bus driver. Our cameras that are on the side of the buses allow us to pay more attention to our students because that fast car moving past us, when we know that we're stopped, we know we have our arm out, our stop arm, and they're supposed to stop. We can't see everything. We can't concentrate on our students while we're concentrating on our reckless driver. So my job is to go to these schools and teach these kids how to save their own lives at their bus stop. I tell them, once you get on the bus, you're safe. That bus is built like a tank. You are safer in that school bus than you are in your car. But outside the bus, I cannot get up, out of the seat and run down those stairs and push you out of the way. And as Jimmy spoke, he's alarmed. He's a new bus driver and he is alarmed at the amount of people that are running our school bus stop sign. And we see them, we're at red lights, we see what everybody's doing, they're on their phones, they're not paying attention to where they're going. So it's a very, very important program. It's a vital program. Just in these past two weeks, since the Marietta Daily Journal has released the articles saying that nothing can be done right now if you run a school bus stop sign, we have seen an increase. I had a man look at me the other day with a smug look on his face as he went past my stop sign. Like, what are you gonna do about it? That's alarming. My kids no longer ride the bus, but like he said, every child that's on there belongs to us and their parents depend on us to get them to school alive. And to get them back home again, alive. When I teach new drivers, that's what I tell them. People have no idea what school bus drivers do, but our main goal is to get them to school alive and back home alive. And parents have no idea the jeopardy that their children are in at the bus stop, not on the bus. Their worry a lot of times is on the bus. But it's not. They're in danger at their bus stop, in neighborhoods, on main roads, in subdivisions. Had a parent tell me, they're fine, they're in a subdivision? No, they're not. If there is a car around you, you need to be back away from the road. One of our little sayings in the SOAR program, SOAR stands for Safe, Orderly, and Respectful. That's the name of the program that goes to schools. One of the things that we tell them is stay back, stay away, stay alive. And it's a shame that we're teaching five-year-olds that, but that little girl right there was five years old when she was killed here in Cobb County. That's reality. I wish we could create a film that we could show the public of all the near misses. It scares you to death. It scares us to death. Because we're sitting behind that wheel praying that that car stops before they hit the kid. That's our reality. And there are a thousand of us. We only have cameras on 10% of our fleet. And look at all the violations that were sent out just in 2017. If we had cameras on every single bus, outstanding, the numbers would just be, you just couldn't fathom the amount of numbers. People say it's an income, your neighbors come to you and say, golly, man, I got one of those tickets in the mail. What are you gonna do about that? I hope you tell them, please slow down and stop next time. It could be your child. So I appreciate your support. It really matters. Appreciate your support very much.
The next speaker is Breon Perkins.
Hi, I'm Breon Perkins. I'm a senior at Pebblebrook High School. And today I will be giving you the We Thrive in Riverside Rentals Association 2017 Highlights. In January, we did the MLK Community Service Project, which we did was the cleanup project we keep called Beautiful. In March, we hosted a family game night at the Echo Center on Riverside Parkway. In April, we hosted a, I'm Going to College Cookout with Premier Learning Academy. In May, we won the 2017 Mayton Day Community Spirit Award. In August, we partnered with Cobb County Public Safety, which we hosted a national Out Against Crime event. In December, this past week, we did a neighborhood summit at Uba Renzo's Restaurant. In addition, we held four meetings this year and two meetings with the Riverside Business and Precinct Two Commander, Major Van Hooster and Captain Hemington. Thank you.
The next speaker is Monica Delancey.
Good evening. My name is Monica Delancey, live in the Riverside Community, which is located in Osteale, Georgia. As you can hear, We Thrive in Riverside Rentals Association had a very productive year. Just wanted to share that with you. But I'm here to speak about the priorities for 2018 that should be at the top of the agenda. Riverside Community has a rental occupancy rate more than 50%. If you look at the attended zone for Pebblebrook High School, right, Pebblebrook High School has 25 apartment communities that are zoned to attend that school. With that being said, 40% of the households pay more than 50% of their income on rent. So last Saturday, my daughter talked to you about the Neighborhood Summit. Last Saturday, we wanted to thank Commissioner Cupid and also Mr. Murphy for helping out with Neighborhood Summit. But the people that attended Neighborhood Summit were actually renters who resided on Riverside Parkway, that were 25 people. And they stayed at the summit for four hours and heard reports from Habitat Humanity, heard reports from Kennesaw State University, heard a report from Atlanta Regional Commission, for four hours, right? So that being said, with the challenges they have, that we pay more than 40% of our income on rent, in addition to all the other challenges that we have, we were able to take part in Neighborhood Summit and learn how to be partners in the community and learn about what's needed to be done in order to get our agenda met. So therefore, we want to make sure that housing stays at the forefront. We want to make sure that we provide housing for people, not at the people that make $40,000 a year, we already know. But the households we're talking about that attend schools that are Title I, they make less than $20,000 a year, okay? And I don't believe that we have enough, we don't have any housing that can go, that addresses households that make less than $20,000 a year. So therefore, my daughter's standing here to say that she will be graduating in May. She's been attending the same school feeder paddling for the last 10 years, starting out Riverside and to me, all the way to Pebblebrook. But when we look at her classroom picture, a lot of students have moved out of the area, okay? So in order to stabilize our schools, we have to stabilize our community. That's in order for our community to thrive. And I just wanted to share that. Last Christmas, we gave out paperweights to all the commissioners, but one person didn't get their paperweight because he wasn't here yet. He didn't start until January. So we want to make sure that Mr. Boys receives his paperweight. And, oh, I was gonna put it on the screen first. Thank you. There you are, Mr. Boys. And also, really, we have Christmas cards for the rest of the Board of Commissioners. All right, thank you.
Always nice to have you, Monica.
Oh, thank you. Well, you got t-shirts for National Night Out, yes, you did? Okay.
Thanks, Monica. Okay, do we have any more speakers? Okay, we're just gonna take just 10 seconds here. Yeah, I think we might have a special guest. And it's not Santa, so.
Santa's already here.
Sorry. I opened myself up to that one. Okay, I think they're just getting ready to get a photo up here. Okay, good, all right. We're gonna go back just very briefly, we're gonna add a speaker. Who's the young man, the young lady, I think, right? A man that was rescued by the lifeguards. And here he comes, right here, up the center. So, what's your name?
David.
And where do you go to school at, David?
For Oaks Elementary.
And how old are you?
Five.
Well, we're glad you're here tonight and we want to wish you a very Merry Christmas, okay? Well, that's really special. Okay, we're all, we have no more speakers. Is that correct? All right. So now we'll go on to tab number three. And I move to approve the consent agenda as is and authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. We have a second and discussion. Call the question. It passes five to zero. Thank you. All right, tab number four. The first item is Bill Rowling and the Stop Bar Mission.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, County Attorney, Deborah Dance. I'm here on behalf of the Chairman to present item number four, which is to approve a contract with the Cobb County Board of Education, American Traffic Solutions for the continuation of the Automated Enforcement Program for the School Bus Warning Device violations under forty-six-one sixty-three.
Bill?
And I move that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract amendment with the Cobb County Board of Education, American Traffic Solutions, continue an Automated Enforcement Program for School Bus Warning Device violations pursuant to Georgia Section four forty-six-one sixty-three for an initial term of one year with options for an annual renewal in accordance with items negotiated by the County Attorney's Office, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize Chairman to say police department personnel execute the necessary documents. We have a second. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Cupid?
Just briefly, during public comment, there was recognition about there being some challenges with the program, which the board has been working actively with the membership of our state legislature to address where there may be some gaps. But I think this is coming forward because we recognize the value of the program. And there is opportunity to revisit the program within the next year when the contract will be up for review. I want to thank those who came out and spoke on behalf of the school bus drivers and behalf of the children and keeping them safe. Thank you.
But I have a comment. Okay. Yeah, we have received a lot of emails in support of this. And I think we all definitely support this. There's just some things that we need to work out. So I definitely support continuing this until we can get everything worked out and revised. Thank you.
Further comments? Call the question. Passes five to zero. Thank you. And now, number two. Item number two, which is the cancer, the fire fund issue involving cancer issues?
Yes.
Tony?
Chairman, Commissioners, House Bill one forty-six goes into effect January first to provide firefighters with a cancer benefit. At your last meeting, we had made a recommendation the board approved for coverage with one vendor. Since that time, we've received a second quote with a lower premium for the 2018 plan year. And we would recommend to the board that we contract with that vendor for the 2018 year at approximate premium reduction of thirteen thousand than what was previously recommended.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve as presented.
Second, a discussion. Call the question. Passes five to zero. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're gonna go on to tab number six, where Commissioner Weatherford has the nomination.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to make a recommendation to appoint Dr. Tony Lee to the Public Library Board of Trustees.
We have a second and discussion. Call the question. Passes five to zero. And we'll start with comments from Commissioner Ott.
My comments are, I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Commissioner Burrow?
The Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets program that I started last year, we got our twenty-second adoption yesterday. And I'd like to congratulate Mr. Harmon here, four-year veteran of the Air Force. He found his new forever friend in our program, and he became a pall parent, a pall parent when he adopted this adorable three-year-old Shih Tzu this week. And this is our twenty-second adoption, and a great Christmas gift for this veteran who served our country. And also, there's some flyers in the back. Bring one for the chipper. It's Saturday, January sixth, from nine to four at various Home Depot and Cobb County Parks locations. They're all on the flyers in the back. And bring your live recycled Christmas tree, and we'll take care of it for you. And that's a program sponsored by Keep Cobb Beautiful. And I'd just like to also wish everyone a very blessed Christmas and a happy 2018. God bless you.
Thanks, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. Merry Christmas. And I want to make sure that we remember those that are going to be protecting us from our public safety, as well as all the ones that are working in DOT, water, and other things to clear up some of the debris from the snowstorm. And they're gonna be continuing to work on our behalf. But Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, everyone, for joining us for our last Board of Commissioners meeting of the year. Just want to thank all of you at home and all of you who are here with us today for all of the work that you do in serving Cobb County. Thank you for your partnership in making our county the, a place that we all can enjoy and work in and play in, but most of all, to live in. This year has really been a sobering and a reflective year as we consider life. We had a presentation to the young man whose life was saved, but also we also had a death that has been on the hearts of many of us in our community with the school crossing guard that was killed as she was helping young students cross the street. And if there's anything that's been taught, it's just to value today while you have it. And I know that sometimes the work we do in government is frustrating. It's not easy. But what we all have is our life and our presence. And it just want to encourage us to honor humanity as we go into the next year, just honor that we're all in this life trying to make it the best that we can be for our homes, for ourselves and our community. And it's just a much better life to live when we do this in concert and in peace with each other. So with that, just hope everybody has a wonderful holiday and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford and Cupid. And I want to also, first of all, thank everyone who came tonight to make comments and all during the year. A special shout-out to Mr. David Birkenbine. We appreciate your dedication, your passion, and someday it will be rewarded, I can assure you. I also want to thank the board members for really helping me through this first year. It has been a true pleasure to work with every one of them. We have done a lot together, and I use the word "we" because this is a team. So with that, I want to wish everybody in this county and the state of Georgia and America a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and God bless all of you. Thank you and good night.